Good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners meeting of September the 8th, 2015. We are pleased today to have Nate Jones introduce a veteran for us to do the pledge. Nate, would you like to introduce?
Yes. First of all, I'm Nate, Delaware County Veterans Affairs Officer, and I'm here to introduce a guy by the name of Gary Turner. He's a lifelong resident of Delaware County. He served as a combat infantryman with the 25th Infantry Division in Vietnam from April of 1968 to March of 1969. And then in 1984, he was designated the Vietnam Veterans Memorial for Delaware County and was the chairman of the committee. Would you like to come on up? This is Gary Turner.
Let us please hear him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate your service and opportunity for you to come up. Okay, now we'll have the roll call, please.
Mr. Kane, here. Mr. Henry, here. Ms. Reagan.
President. Thank you. We do have some appointments today for the East Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. And Mr. Murphy, is he out there?
Good morning, Terry Murphy. The Economic Development Alliance. Today, we're asking that there be three appointments to the Delaware County, I'm sorry, to the East Central Indiana Redevelopment Authority. Two would come from Henry County and three from Delaware County. The two from Henry County would be Corey Murphy. He is the president of the Newcastle Henry County Economic Development Corporation. And Missy, I don't know how to spell her last name, it's M-O-D-E-S-I-T-T. She's the executive director of the Newcastle Henry County Chamber of Commerce. We've talked a little bit about the different people who might pick up this authority. This authority will overlook the regional cities plan. And should we be fortunate enough to receive funding for one or more of the projects that were submitted in that plan, that money will become, that will come through the redevelopment authority. And they'll be responsible for the administration.
We've each sent you a name, I believe. And how should we vote as, add them to our slate?
They would need to be added to the slate, those two. So that there would be, you'd be voting on a total of five. And then tomorrow, Henry County, their commissioners will meet and they will vote on that same slate of five people.
Mr. Murphy, just want us to read off our, our individual.
I'd make a motion, we approve the two from Henry County as presented. Also Brad Bookout, Ted Baker, and Trish Stanley.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Thank you, Terry, for all the effort you've been putting in on this. Thank you. Approval of minutes, August 17th.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, now we have a warranty deed. Mr. Murphy?
The auditor's office requires the commissioners to approve the acceptance of a deed of property. I think that's a good policy. This is a deed for some, for a parcel on Nevo and Jackson for the roundabout there. This is actually the last parcel we need to acquire. It's from the Lucas family. We reached an agreement with them after initiating the condemnation action.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, it's Pat Hart here today with the Red Ribbon. I don't see Pat out there. She has a grant, we'll table that. And someone from Feed My Sheep, I believe, was going to be here today to...
If we're going to table that, we'll need a motion in a second.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anybody else up there. I'll make a motion to table that. Are you, she doesn't, I guess we do have that, don't we?
Yep, we've got all the information there.
We're just approving them, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Different projects that, we do this every year.
Yeah. She was supposed to be here.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. We should put in the minutes there that it is for $62,662 that she distributes to the community. And her breakfast is coming up and I thought she was going to sell some tickets maybe today to that. But then we'll catch her next month, it's in October. Okay, thank you. Okay. Nancy Carlson's here today to speak to us on the half of bicentennial. She's got a smile on her face.
Hello there, I'm Nancy Carlson. I'm a retired schoolteacher and volunteer coordinator of Delaware County's portion of Indiana's bicentennial torch relay. Most of you know that Indiana celebrates its 200th anniversary next year. And the state is holding a torch relay which will go through all 92 counties in a five-week period. The day that it's coming through our county is Tuesday, September 27th, 2016. That sounds like a long way off, but we are invited by the state to have a free community event, including dignitaries and such, which will light our torch. And then our job right now is to nominate 24 torch bearers which will carry our torch through a path that goes through downtown and the whole state community. And so I have with me today torch bearer nomination forms. They are also online at Indiana2016. If you want to find that, it's a really easy, oh, it's dot...
Dot org.
Dot org. Indiana2016.org. But we've poked some of the applications in the form outside the commissioner's office. So I have 10 with me now, and then there are more outside on the form, in the form box. And let me tell you who's to carry the torch. They are people who have achieved celebrity status, professional excellence, or personal excellence. They either need to live in Delaware County or used to live in Delaware County. They don't have to be human. We could nominate Garfield the Cat, for example, and we should. You can't nominate yourself, but you can get someone to nominate you. And we need 24 torch bearers. The torch is being designed by the Engineering School at Purdue and it will weigh less than five pounds. You don't have to run, you don't even have to walk. You could ride in a car, or a buggy, or on a horse, or in a milk wagon, or whatever you want. But we need those nominations. So far, we only have three. It'd be nice to have 48 nominations to choose from. So I have a few with me today, if you'd like to raise your hands and get them, or they're in the box outside. Nominate torch bearers. We don't want to be embarrassed by not having anybody to carry our torch a year from now.
And that deadline is...
The deadline is December 31st. We only have three nominees so far. I have a few with me, if you'd like to raise your hand.
Thank you, Nancy. You can see she doesn't have any enthusiasm about this.
I do have enthusiasm.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your effort that you've been putting in this.
I'll take one.
Yes. And we are going out into the county, but it's a very fast, we're only, the torch is only here for three hours, and so that's why we do have to kind of move it along. Welcome.
I apologize for being late this morning.
Did approved this request for you, but I'm not sure you wanted to tell us about your Red Ribbon request.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, I apologize, had some things come up, rough morning. So I just want to make you all aware that Red Ribbon Community Breakfast is October 23rd. The last two years, we've had over 600 people. So you all are very welcome. I have, happen to have tickets and tickets are at our office if, if you're interested. A table, a full table of eight for reserved seating is 200. Individual tickets are 25. We put a lot into the program. It's on substance abuse awareness month of October. And of course, we sponsor the Delaware County Pride Team and they will be doing a new presentation for everyone. So, thank you very much. You mentioned that you approved our grants. So we have 14 grant awards that we're excited to be giving out to the community this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
Pat, what time is the breakfast?
Starts at 7:30.
And it goes till 9:30?
Yes. And if you get there at 7:15, we'll let you in because we try to get people, it's a full buffet, and we try to get people to go ahead and get their plate so we can get that many people fed. And get the program going. So, thank you.
Okay, moving down to the contracts and agreements. I think Brad has Mr. Good Industries here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Bookout with the Delaware County Economic Development. Before you, and I know Sheri has been involved in meetings regarding this, I think the other commissioners have been briefed as well. But before you is a memorandum of understanding with Good Industries. Good Industries is a Camden, Ohio operation. They specialize in rail spurs, in rail spur activity, and building a book of business, so to speak, with rail spurs. As you're aware, the Delaware County has a rail spur on the west side of the county. I've spoke with John. They are interested in entering into a memorandum of understanding to help continue to build a book of business with that rail spur and further develop the rail spur. They do have experience with this in Ohio, have had great success and great luck with this in Ohio, specifically working with Norfolk and Southern, which is the main line that goes right past the spur at that location. What we would do is, this memorandum of understanding would cost the county nothing. It would just simply be a commitment, a committal of my time to work with John to further go through businesses to help develop more business and interest in the spur. We would basically gauge the interest of not only local companies, but also companies in the surrounding area around Delaware County in use of the spur. And all rail-related services, whatever that may be. So anyways, I will introduce John here to tell you a little bit about Good Industries. And then I appreciate your support of this memorandum of understanding. It is an 18-month MOU and will be reviewed every six months to see the effectiveness of it. So, thank you.
Brad, does the commissioners need to sign this because there's no signature line for them?
Page two. Do you have page two?
Yeah.
Now, the bottom.
Oh, mine's...
You've got, you've got your copy. I did, I did speak with Mr. Reagan. I'll give you my copy, Denise.
Okay, I've got it.
You got it. Okay, very good. Yeah, Commissioner Reagan did catch that and asked me to have John add signature lines for it. The commissioners, as well as he. So that's all the bottom.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Hartman, I'm Director of Business Development for Good Industries. The company has been around since 1979. It's a family-owned and operated business. Started life as a trucking company, conventional, over the road. And we've been working with Norfolk and Southern since 1994. And in the last 21 years, we've grown into one of their premier private transload operations on their eastern railroad network, which is over 20,000 miles. We have two facilities. Our headquarters are in Camden, Ohio, and we opened another facility in Franklin, Ohio about six years ago. It was an old abandoned shingle manufacturing plant that the city didn't want to see become dilapidated and destroyed. So they asked if we were interested and we, we said that we would be. We didn't have any business there, didn't have any employees there. I'm happy to say that six years later, we're fully employed. We've got 12 full-time of our staff. We also have two folks that work for a company that we do business with there. Great book of business, opened us up into a new industry segment that we'd never entered before by going there. And we're looking to do more of the same here. We have the experience, we have the contacts within Norfolk Southern. Really what our mission is, is to bring rail to the railless. So those companies that aren't rail-served, we make that affordable and we give them alternative shipping options that they might not have considered. We're a one-stop shop, so they don't have to know anything about rail. They can go through us and we'll handle all that for them. Looking forward to working with Brad and Bill and just happy to be here.
We're glad to have you. And it's a short drive over from your office.
About an hour and 15 minutes for me to get here.
And so it's a doable project?
Absolutely.
And we don't know how many businesses might be looking into, but with your expertise and some PR, we should get some feedback.
And that's, that's the purpose of the MOU, is to gauge interest, see what industries might be most amenable to wanting to work with the rail here, and then we'll go from there and try to build a book of business.
And we know it's not going to be the big cargo, those are...
It won't be intermodal shipping containers that go overseas. The railroad handles that themselves. They don't allow third-party operators yet to get involved with that, but we handle everything else that the rail ships, with the exception of automobiles.
Thank you, John. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Motion to approve the MOU between Good Industries and the Delaware County Office of Economic Development.
Second.
Do you have the paper?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a good day.
Bill? Thanks. Okay, now we have agreement for a collection of property taxes with Mr. Thomas Hurley. Treasurer want to speak to that?
Attorney Campbell, Delaware County Treasurer. I have contract with the commissioners and Tom Hurley to collect back taxes, judgments. I'll give you a contract.
You ready, Hannah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy and Tom Hurley have come up with a contract for the commissioners, and I know that you are much involved with making this up too, but need to have a first couple million or more in judgments out there we need to start trying to collect.
Had that been on file since somebody's been working on this? And all costs will be transferred to the state.
Mr. Murphy, you have made some changes.
Alterations, minor alterations, but satisfactory in my opinion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Expect these and hear some good news in about six months. Okay, turning it over to resolutions for approval. Resolution 2015-026, execute the documents. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jason Rogers, Delaware County Emergency Management Director with, one with John Catino, the Deputy Director. This was a process that has been put to us by Indiana Department of Homeland Security. It is allowable by FEMA and they've pushed it out to all 92 counties. And I hope that Rob Puckett would have been here, who's our district coordinator, but evidently he couldn't make it this morning. This resolution is regarding authorization to execute documents because IDHS is now doing reimbursable grants. So essentially, we have to pay for the items ourselves, make sure that they are on the allowable equipment list by FEMA, and have a few other processes as far as going through the grants office. It is not required now to have a, either a resolution or a ordinance for those particular grants because we're paying them out of pocket first. So this would expedite the grant process. We would still want to bring those notifications of grants before you. This just would not require your signature before we could send it back to get the money reimbursed to the county.
What number is that?
26?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2015-26, a resolution regarding authorization to execute documents for EMA.
We may need to fill in some names.
Yes, so if it, there's two positions that they would allow. Most counties are doing the EMA Director and the Deputy Director, or EMA Director and a Commissioner, if that's, that's your pleasure. It's, it's up to you how you want to handle that.
I would, I would say that you two could handle that okay.
Well, I was going to say, maybe a vice president or something. To give it some...
It's essentially just a signature. We'll still be bringing them before you to let you know that this is ongoing. It's not, it's essentially allowing us to get the money put back into our accounts. So it's, it's something that is, you'll be aware that we're applying for these grants anyway, as you normally are. However, we won't have to wait the two weeks or sometimes four weeks for the paperwork to come through. And then obviously, for your meeting and then, and then back. So it's going to expedite that time period. Makes no difference to me how you want to do it.
Have something on the resolution.
I can just want that.
I agree.
I mean, the grants, that way they can be processed a lot quicker.
You and I, more than likely, will discuss them anyway. I'm okay with you guys signing them.
Roll call. Does that, that's a motion?
I'll make a motion, Jason Rogers and John Catino are the two designated...
I would, I would think the titles we've won in there, not the names.
I, I agree.
Director, Deputy Director of EMA.
That's fine.
Okay, Director. That way...
Deputy Director.
Sure. Wanted to redo it if somebody leaves, I understand.
Right.
I would also ask that signatures be in blue ink, as they normally give us a hard time if they're not.
We don't need that in the motion, though.
No, we don't. Just, just as a reminder.
Okay. So are we ready for, do you have that, Denise?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Murphy for this. He, the state sent us several different documents, kind of incorporating this, and he turned it into a one-page, nice little document for our resolution. So thanks for your work on that, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Resolution 2015-027. Resolution amending Resolution 2015-024 and abolishing the Board of Registration for the Voters Registration Office. Could you please fill us in on why we were redoing this?
I can. We passed a resolution about a month ago in which we put the responsibility for duties and the employees of the Voters Registration Office in the hands of the county clerk, which is permissible under the statute. However, if you track through the statute, you'd need to do something with the existing Board of Registration, otherwise you have, and still in existence without any powers. So it was pointed out to us by county council that they thought we ought to approve this supplemental resolution abolishing the, the Board of Registration, leaving only the clerk in charge of that office.
Okay, so line two's been added.
Yes.
Okay. Here, Kate, a motion, Joe.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
When does this resolution become effective? Does it say in that?
September 25th of 2015.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Thank you.
Motion to approve 2015-27. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Resolution 2015-028. Resolution cancel existing interlocal agreement for healthcare coverage and other entities. And we don't have a list of those other entities. Oh, here they are.
Rick, could you...
In discussions with commissioners about setting up a health plan that is sustainable for the county, this is something that we looked at to kind of save some money. Delaware County being self-insured up to 200,000, every individual that we have on our plan is a possible liability to that point. In days past, insurance plans were cheaper by the number of people that were on them, but with, with the Affordable Care Act, that, that is now gone. So we don't need size, we just actually need to be a little bit smaller and, and, you know, better sustained for any loss we might have.
And for the individuals that are covered in the interlocal agreements right now, we are assisting them and trying to...
Yeah, we have suggested a couple independent agents and, and we can help, you know, we've offered to help with anything we can on helping them find coverage. I think, as a matter of fact, one of the agents has even worked with them to form their own group, so.
Shannon, who all does this cover? I'm the president of the Delaware County Community Corrections. And I think that that...
Community Corrections isn't included in the interlocal. They were, they were set upon that.
Okay. Who does this cover?
It was Centertownship, Airport.
Airports, Fairgrounds. Used to be Regional Waste Water, but I believe they have their own.
They have their own Visitors Bureau.
Visitors Bureau, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we speak at this time, or?
Go ahead.
Kate Walker, Centertownship Trustee. Mr. Murphy, you looked at the interlocal agreement to make sure that this is everything's agreeable with this?
I did have copies of the interlocal agreement.
The last interlocal agreement? Because my attorney has that now as well, so, and I haven't gotten back with him yet to make sure that it is legal to, make sure that it is fine and that this is broken as well.
Yes, I did look at those.
And Mr. Spangler, I mean, we have met with some insurance companies, and I'm sorry to, I'm not disputing and not wanting to argue, but what I've been told, though, the stronger more that we have, the better off that we are, not what you said.
Well, what would help you, I mean, Delaware County's self-insured. And because you're not self-insured, or you're not going to be a big enough group to be self-insured, you're, you are going to pay more, more rate.
Well, absolutely. I mean, I believe that's why I've praised, or I've praised and so thankful that many years ago, when Property Act caps set in, that the Delaware County Commissioners then took us under their wing. And that's what survived our office to make us go as long as we went, as far as we went, was with the insurance. And that's what we've survived with and able to help people in Delaware County and the City of Centertownship.
I'm sure that saved you a lot of money. But the problem is now the county can't sustain, you know, the liability of major losses. So that's what's causing us to have to do this. Not something that...
Not something they want to do, but the only way we can bring the insurance expenses down is to look at every part of the program.
Because what I understand is, isn't that all built in? When we make our payment, your losses and everything like that, our monthly payment that we pay?
Not correct. The insurance premium pays the administrative fees and it builds an actuarial balance for large losses over $200,000. The minimal losses up to $200,000 are paid by the county.
I remember this, I'm not sure the date, because time flies by fast, two, three years ago, whatever it may be. Maybe one of you guys might remember. We did go over our loss, not us, Center Township, but as Delaware County as a whole. And we were billed, we were all divided into an equal amount, all of the county employees, I assume, and then all the extra ones that was on. And we all paid that extra amount on top of what we paid on our monthly. We were billed, I don't know, $20,000, $30,000 that we were billed extra that we had to pay. James, was you on the end?
Uh-huh. I was the whole.
Absolutely.
It was a couple years, I think it was a couple years ago.
I did the invoices.
I think it was my first year as a classroom.
Patty, did they all pay? I was thinking, because I think I was on the council, and I think a few paid, but not all.
Yeah, I'm thinking there was at least one that Larry had to go to state, like, to get. And then after he went to the state, their state affiliation, they did finally pay.
Yeah.
I'd like to comment on who that was, but...
Office might well be able to pay if there was an overage, but could the airport, could the visitors bureau? I mean, you get two people, and it doesn't really even have to be a major issue anymore. You know, you can spend $200,000 just in a moment in a hospital, so.
You know, I'm not arguing, I'm just, this is my bitch, this is my complaint, I'm sorry. But, you know, and Rick, as I spoke with you, I remember, you know, we've had a good working relationship, and that's what I want. I think that's what makes our county go and our city go, is a good working relationship between all of us. But when I came up to, you know, this is budget time. This is when, beforehand, when we turn our budgets in, this is what we work upon. And, you know, I laid off three employees in June, and now I came to you before this, just a month or a month and a half before that. And your exact words was, hey ma'am, we're looking good. I've looked into, I've looked into the interns, I don't think cost is going up, we're doing good. I set my budget that sore. And so now, I'm literally just, I'm a mess. I mean, you know, because I'm sitting around and I'm trying to run around everywhere trying to find insurance for 10, 11, 12 employees. And let alone, I'm sure, the visitors bureau and the airport authority board, and if the fairgrounds with their one employee. I'm not sitting up here, I'm, yeah, I guess I am crying because I'm upset. I mean, you know, I mean, it bothers me. And I know there's nothing that I can do about it, but you know, if everyone else knows me in this room, I'm not going to sit quiet. I'm going to let my voice be heard, that I'm bothered and I'm upset. I understand you've got to do what you've got to do sometimes. But if we would have had a little bit more pre-warning on the day that I would spoke with you up there and said, hey, this is what's going on, or, James, I talked to you, I mean, I'm just speaking from my heart, and that's how I feel.
We, you know, try to let people know as soon as possible. Matter of fact, last week I caught thunder for sending the letter out so early before these guys had even met on it. I was trying to give everybody the amount of time they had. You know, these Commissioners charged me with bringing in a health plan that saved the employees of Delaware County, not saved the employees of Delaware County, but yeah, saved their health care, so that they didn't have to pay higher deductibles, so they didn't have to pay more in their part. And that's what I'm trying to do.
I understand that. It's not an argument, Rick, if you would have told me that day that I was up there in your office, I would at least have had a month, month and a half because I was just up there before I laid my employees off there. Remember that, because I was working on my budget, trying to figure out what I could do. And so it just kind of left everybody in a pickle, you know? We were just kind of like dumbfounded. I thought we were good, I thought we were good to roll, so. Anyway, I'll wait till Mr. Murphy, I get my agreement back as well to make sure that we're good. I might be back next month arguing that you guys are wrong and the agreement's wrong, but anyway, if you've looked at it, I'm sure that it's probably okay, but...
I'll be happy to discuss with your attorney.
Can you talk to the city, what they allow you guys to do on theirs?
They've already done their enrollment and everything is done with theirs. They've done that, what, two months ago, or whatever it was, I assume, so. I've had some meetings, set up meetings, but when you, like Rick said, when you take, and thank God, I at least got, you know, well, there's 13 of us left, but three of us are trying, we're trying to save money because of the property tax caps, so three of us are trying to go off into our husbands when that open enrollment period comes, so we're probably just, we're only 10. But when you go to the airport authority, which has maybe three or four, the visitors bureau, three or four, you have, you know, the fairgrounds, one, I mean, you know, talking, that's a lot of money for insurance. So, anyway, thank you for the time, and you know, I just have to, you know, I am, I've got to voice my opinion and I've got to say my thoughts, so if not, I can't sleep at night, I'm not comfortable, so. Thank you.
You're done.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure. Rick, do you suppose it's something we could postpone for a year to get simple times for the budgets?
I mean, what we were trying to do, the purpose of this, was to take the liability off the county. And, you know, the council's in budget hearings now, definitely the savings aren't going to be as much if we do this. And who knows what the liability? I mean, we're only talking probably 27 people, 26 people total, but for each one of those belly buttons, there's a $200,000 liability to you guys and the council, so.
I make a motion with table. Second.
Second?
Yep.
Roll call.
You said until next meeting?
Until next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes. So, moving down to departments, elected officials.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Jason Rogers, Delaware County Emergency Management. I want to start off with just informing you that it is National Preparedness Month, September 11th is coming again. And there are a few Delaware County employees from EMS that are going to be honored this weekend by Grace Baptist Church at their grace and time of need. Award ceremony this Sunday, and that is for a house fire where two residents were saved in Delaware County. And they will be honoring Captain Aaron Hahn, Lieutenant Robert Swoboda, Lieutenant Larry Kraus, paramedic Jim Criswell, and paramedic Robert Cox. And that will be this weekend. And then the following week, the Pilot Club will be honoring the EMT of the Year, and that is paramedic Kylie Culberson, who are all Delaware County EMS. Several events will be going on. Yesterday, the Olive Garden for a month of caring, providing food for all of the working crews for Labor Day. So a couple of contacts we've made and been able to just get some recognition for these guys, and it's very much appreciated on their end, I know, for the hard work that they do. The last thing that I have for you this morning is the write-offs. This is through 831, and the write-off amount is $333,659.65.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Appreciate the Olive Garden, Grace Baptist, and the Pilot Club for stepping forward and honoring those employees. Anybody else?
Putting a different hat on here so I don't have to go to one of you. Hearts and Hands United, you know, we do our backpack giveaway, and then we're getting ready for coats against the cold, and that's October the 18th. I wanted to know if you wouldn't mind if we maybe posted some folders and we could drop off box downstairs?
Sure.
We want to collect new, used hats, gloves, coats, anything like that. Do you guys do memos in your checks or anything like that as well?
Email.
Email?
They do everything.
Could you do a blast email as well to your employees that were, and clean out their closets and...
Will you send something and then I'll send it to you?
Yeah, I could send you the flyer or I could send you an email as well. Just pass it on to the community. It's getting so much more needed and we ran out of school supplies this year, so. And we also serve adults in the winter as well, so. And I'll give you the giveaway date also, so your employees know if they need supplies or, you know, coats and hats and closets, they're more than welcome to come as well. Okay? All right, be thankful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Ways and Measures have their monthly report. Famitals of Flags of $1,987,021.68.
Most of them make payment of claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes, thank you. Any questions and comments and discussion from the public today? Okay, I would like to suggest if anybody hasn't been out to Minatrista to stop and see the flags, that the Exchange Club is hosting 1,000 flags. It's a very lovely site. They're having a closing ceremony this Friday at 5:30 out there where they will be honoring the veterans, and the hometown band will be playing, and it's just a nice gesture. But the flags are being guarded 24/7, so you can stop and make a donation in memory or honor of a person and have the flag, have a yellow ribbon attached to your flag. So we appreciate Roger filming this today, and we're on Wednesday night, 8 o'clock, and Saturday morning, 9:00, and some other late nights, but Roger, we appreciate that being in video. So, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess. Second.
Recession, thank you.